I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mr. Bono?
Present.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mrs. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. Silva?
Here.
Mr. Sabrana?
Present.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Present.
In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has called notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following: Announcing time, place, agenda, etc. The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, the Press of Atlantic City, Vista Bueno, the Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute?
To the flag, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mustarel, do we have a resolution for executive session?
We do. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the City of Vineland School District will convene an executive session for the following reasons as outlined in NJSA 10:4-12. Discussion is about any matter involving the proposed lease or acquisition of real property and matters falling within the attorney-client privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise her ethical duties as a lawyer.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are no special presentations, there's no hip reports. Are there any questions or comments for the approval of minutes on the August 20th additional combined meeting and August 20th executive session? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Harris? Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Committee reports.
Thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes. Curriculum instruction met on August 25th. Present was Mrs. DiMarci, Ms. Gataluski, Mr. Sabrana, Mr. Bono, and Mr. Silva. The committee discussed the submission of the IMPACT grant. The instructional materials for the IMPACT grant is designed to support schools in purchasing and implementing high-quality instructional materials for literacy to accelerate student learning and strengthen Tier One instruction across all grade levels. Other topics discussed: summer reading, summer reading is required for all students entering sixth to 12th grade, summer reading is due September 12th, summer curriculum work and professional development, the Danielson calibration assessment for administrators, ELA and math interventions courses for ninth graders, math lab, pre-algebra, and close reading, financial literacy for the class of 2029, September district-wide professional development schedule, annual school plans. Each school has set four goals for the 25-26 school year focused on ELA, math, SEL, and either attendance or multilingual learner objective. Curriculum instruction updates for the 25-26 school year. Transportation met the next day on August 26th. Present was Mr. Rivera, Mr. Bono, Mr. Harris, Superintendent Yano, Mr. Bermudez, Mr. Mustarel, and Ms. Blakely. There are 143 drivers budgeted for the year of 25-26. Route packages, which is drivers needed, 131, 127 filled positions, three drivers on leave, 21 substitute drivers, and 12 drivers in training. Driver attendance NA. The registrations, there are 89 open registrations. They completed 461 registrations between July and August. Discuss the jointure with Millville for transport to Atlantic County Specialty Services. Co-op total year-to-date is nine. Of course, no accidents in August. The new assistant coordinator is Dorian Ricketts. Interviews for Secretary for Supervisor of People Transportation happened on August 26th. Follow-up discussion on bus accident form. Extravaganza, staff on hand to share registration and transportation information with parents. Bus is available for students to board. School supply giveaways, bus yard cleared to ensure ample parking for families and guests. General items discussed: open meeting and professional development happened on August 28th. My view information shared with parents and guardians. And meeting at City Hall on August 18th to discuss future Chestnut Avenue improvements. Thank you.
Any other committee reports?
The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, August 26th, and we discussed the following items. Financials, we discussed the budgetary balances for June as well as through the final of the year. We also discussed applying for a cybersecurity grant funded by the state. We discussed some facilities issues and having to do with Sabatier Cunningham. We also discussed personnel item that had to do with principal data analyst, but my understanding is that's been fulfilled. And we discussed the food service. We actually have a corrective action because we unfortunately didn't spend enough money. So Mr. Mustarel is taking care of that issue as well. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera?
The Facility Committee meeting took place Thursday, August 21st at 4:30 p.m. In attendance were Mr. Bono, Mr. Harris, Mr. Yano, Mr. Mustarel, Mr. Farnacho, and myself. Project update and review to include both capital 2024, 25 carryover, and 25-26 capital projects. The ESIP progress, scope of work was discussed. The Petway dehumidification supplement initiative was discussed as well. Rossi and Napolito, 16 HVAC unit replacements. VHS North Tanner Wing Classroom HVAC replacement. Sabatier and Delago fencing initiatives. Duran Roof Replacement. Napolito and Rossi metal siding veneer encapsulization. VHS South sectional roof replacement added based on immediate condition of roofing. Absorbed some of the cost from savings on other bits. Johnson Middle School modifications, athletic improvements. And additional items for discussion also included the Sabatier pool, Cunningham School renovation, water grant initiative, manufacturing issues, HVAC, Wallace, Petway, Sabatier, Delago, Rossi, and Napolito. Also discussed were the technology overview, improving cybersecurity, update on two-factor authentication. The Vills Grant objectives. Capital replacement of interior hardware and wiring district-wide. All schools completed except Varsity, Memorial, Landis, and Center City School. New business and old business, ongoing HVAC staffing challenges and end-of-life equipment, water source compressors that run on refrigerant R22 at Wallace, Petway, and Sabatier. Rossi, I lost my screen there. Rossi and Napolito additional HVAC units, and Sabatier annexed system compressor issues and other parts, as well as district walkthroughs with Q Sac, indoor air quality, and mold concerns.
Any other reports? Is there a public meeting report by the Board Solicitor?
Nothing to report, thank you.
I do not believe our student representative is here this evening. Public comment on agenda items or any other matter. Please state your name and limit yourself to three minutes. Do we have any yellow sheets?
We do. Janiele Bennett?
Hello. I'm here because of my daughter. Last year, she's gonna be attending 10th grade.
Just get a little closer to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. I'm here because of my daughter. She's gonna be attending 10th grade. And she got no buses to attend school from where I stay to where the school at. It's a long distance walk. Landis Avenue, where I stay at, there's no sidewalk. And I don't understand with her getting a bus last year, she don't have a bus this year. And I'm a single mother, and I'm worried like with her safety and the weather condition, why she don't have a bus? I called the school and I asked question, and they're telling me about the mileage. But I'm like, she had a bus last year. So why is it this year she don't have one? And for the next three years, she gotta walk to school? So that's the information I'm getting, and I'm concerned about that. With my other two daughter, it was the same issue. And I had to attend the board meeting in order for them to have a bus. And I live close to the library. So with me living close to the library, she have to walk all the way to the high school. So, and I even asked the question to the person I was talking to on the phone, will they walk that distance to school? And they told me no. So I'm like, so why she have to walk that distance? And there is a bus stop like maybe a block from where I stay at. So why I don't have a bus? And I said, I pay taxes, I help support these buses. And for the concern of my child with the weather condition, and she have to walk that far, I'm very concerned.
I want to ask Mr. Bermudez to check in with you after, in a moment. So he'll get your information so he can get back to you.
Alright, thank you.
Does anybody else like to speak? Seeing none?
Superintendent's recommendations for discussion and approval by the Board.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding Personnel Item 1.1.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Bell for being recently promoted to the position of Assistant Principal at Wallace School. I see the Wallace team here this evening. Congratulations, Ms. Bell.
Congratulations.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding Procedures and Operations Items 2.1 through 2.6.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding Finance Items 4.1 through 4.13.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Regular agenda items, there are none. Proposed items for review or discussion or adoption by Board members? None. Approval of the itemized bill pay list for July 2025. Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Roll call please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are no emergent items. Old business, new business, Board Member or Superintendent remarks. I'm gonna start with Mr. Holmes.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Bono?
I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Dawn Bell, Ms. Dawn Bell, for the promotion to Vice Principal at Wallace School. Welcome back to Vineland. Super happy for you, and best of luck in your new position. I know you'll do a great job with the team over at Wallace. I also like to wish all the children that are coming back to school for this calendar year a successful year. I hope we work on our attendance and do the best we can as a district to help elevate these children to the heights that they all belong. Okay? I also like to remind all the art teachers, including Superintendent Yano, to push the initiative for the art project that we discussed over the summer so we can paint the press box at the Gattone Stadium. You know, I'd like to put it on the students of Vineland, make a contest with the art students. And then I'd like to see if the Board can vote on, you know, the winner. Top five maybe students selected by your team. And then maybe the Board can vote to see it achieved. Again, best of luck on this school year. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Mrs. Perez?
Good evening. I just want to congratulate Mrs. Bell. I've heard wonderful things about you, so we're glad to have you back in our district. I know you're gonna do a wonderful job. This is my first year as a Board Member, starting off a new school year, and there's a lot of excitement in the air, and it's really exciting. So I hope that excitement lasts maybe until at least October. So have a great year, everyone, and thank you for those that come out and speak up. It's needed, we want to hear from you, we need to hear from you. So thank you very much.
Mr. Rivera?
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to Ms. Bell. Welcome to Vineland Public Schools. We are glad you are here. I know that Rosalyn is also glad you are here. And she's, you guys have a, you have a great team over there, and I look forward to working along with you. Congratulations, or my best wishes, excuse me, to the children of these Vineland Public Schools. Another year, another exciting time when, you know, you can start over. It's a whole fresh year. Last year was last year. This year is a whole new year, you can start all over. And I wish you nothing but the best. I wish nothing but the best to our central administration, our building administration, our teachers, our support staff, everyone that plays a part in our public schools. And my prayer is that this year be our greatest year yet. My prayer is that God's favor will be upon each and every child in our school district. And that that favor will show in the smiles. That favor will show in the success that we will see through our children here at Vineland Public Schools. And it's just, it's an exciting time, and I always enjoy the first day of school because I get to go to the buildings, and I get to visit the schools, and I get to see the smiles of the kids who haven't had homework yet. And they're excited about school, and they're excited about the first day. And it's always a great time. So all the best to every single person that makes Vineland Public Schools what it is. And every single person that has even the most, you may think is not the greatest or the most important job, but you are important. It doesn't matter what position you hold in this district, you are important, and without you, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. So we thank you, and here's to a good 25-26 school year, a great 25-26 school year to the greatest school district in New Jersey. Thank you.
Mr. Harris?
Good evening. I want to say congratulations to the Assistant Principal, Ms. Bell. If you need anything from me, let me know. Good luck to you. I want to say good luck to all the students. I hope you have a wonderful year. Good luck to the staff. And if anybody needs anything from me, I'm available. That's it.
Mr. Silva?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Bell. Just to wish you nothing but the best at the school. Welcome back. I think back to your old stomping grounds also, too. So I think that it was a full circle, so welcome back and wish you nothing but the best. I'd like to wish all our students, staff, and administration a successful 25-26 school year. Thank you.
Mr. Sabrana?
Congratulations, Dawn Bell, and your team that I see, some of them here. That's a great school, and I'm sure you're gonna do great things over there. It's one of the crown jewels of our district, and it's always good to see people there. We know, and we know they're going to do a good job. This is my 11th year as a Board Member, and after the 20 years of employment, that makes a total of 31. So been rounding off a long time, and there's always a little bit of excitement in the air at this time of the year when we go back to school. The kids are excited, parents, and it's good that we go off to a good start and have another successful year for Vineland Public Schools. Thank you.
Mr. Yano?
Thank you. Before I get into my highlights, I would like to take a moment to recognize Mr. Farnacho, Mr. Cardona, and the whole Facilities Crew. Let's give them a round of applause for all the work that they've completed this summer. This was an exceptional summer with a tremendous amount of HVAC projects and light-in projects, and the team really kicked in. And they're still probably working tonight, and tomorrow, and the next day, and through the weekend. But we are ready to welcome our students tomorrow. So again, we are welcome, and happy, and excited, and super positive about this school year that's coming up. We've had two great days of professional development organized by our central office team, our school leaders, our teachers are charged up, buildings are ready to go. I see our transportation team in the back. I'm sure they are ready to get our drivers on the road tomorrow to pick up those babies nice and early and get them to school on time and ready to go. This year, as we always like to emphasize, but this is especially important year when we talk about attendance. Mr. Bono brought it up, and it's something that every school has written into their annual school plans. Attendance continues to be an area of great focus and opportunity for growth. But we need help from our parents, guardians, grandparents. We need you out there with us, making sure your kids come to school. Just two days a month ends with a child being chronically absent. Two days of absences a month. A child will be chronically absent by the end of the year. We don't want that. Every day of lost instruction can't be made up. So we need your kids in school, your children, our students in school every single day. Our teachers and admin are ready for them, so please bring them to school as often as possible. We kicked off the summer, or ended the summer with our extravaganza, 1,400 participants. All of our school leaders, 40 vendors came out. An amazing day. It was exciting to see all of our community partners out there celebrating with us. New teacher orientation, Non-Tenure Teacher Academy. Again, huge turnout, great positivity, great professional development to get ready for our school year. Just make sure, parents, that you're checking the parent portal. There are updates, there are constantly being updated as far as schedules and even your bus assignments. And finally, on behalf of my team who's here with me this evening, and all of our committed members of the Board of Education, we want to wish you, and all of our students, all of our community members, an awesome and exciting school year. So thank you so much for being here and supporting the effort. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone who's come out this evening. I would like to congratulate Mrs. Bell. I've heard a lot of good about you. I'm excited. Now we have a full staff, I believe, round administrative team out there at Wallace. Yay! I'm excited to hear that. I believe we are up and running with our armed guards also in every school, correct? Okay, I'm so excited about that. It's nine years in the making, and it's one of the things that I have worked very hard with our team throughout the many years to have this done. So I want to thank everybody who's worked hard on the armed guard status. I would like to thank our central administrative team, our principals, assistant principals, all of the staff that has worked throughout the summer to ensure that our schools are up and running this year. I'd like to thank all of our, you know, teachers and our support staff, everyone. Without you guys, our students wouldn't be able to do what they're gonna be able to do, and I'm so excited about this year. I see we have a couple students in our audience this evening, and it's really great to see students at our board meetings. So they're learning, and they're seeing exactly what we're doing. I do wish everyone a successful and productive school year. So let's just make this a success, and I'm gonna copy what everybody else said, and especially what Mr. Rivera said. God bless you all, and may the favor be upon you. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Roll call. No. Do I have, yay! We're gonna go into executive session before the second meeting. Yeah, we're coming back. And then we're gonna go back to executive again.
I'd like to call this special meeting to order. Row call please.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mrs. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Silva.
Here.
And Mr. Sabrana.
Present.
Mrs. Cottisbody.
Here. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Violin Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time, place, agenda, etc. The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Vista Bueno, The Clerk for the City of Violin, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute?
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mustarel is our resolution for executive session.
There is. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and the City of Violin School District will convene an executive session for the following reasons outlined in NJSA 10:4-12. Discussion is about the board member vacancy and any matters falling within the interlly attorney-client privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise her ethical duties as a lawyer.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Row call, please.
Mr. Bono.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mrs. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Public comment on agenda item and any other matter, please state your name and limit your time to three minutes. Do we have any yellow sheets?
We have no yellow sheets. Is there anyone wishing to speak tonight?
Board, this is Chris Wilson, Violin, New Jersey. Just want to take a few moments of your time to speak on a couple matters. One, like you said, President Cottisbody about working on the armed guards for all those years. First and foremost, we want to commend that. The community, the parents feel a lot safer with having that presence in our schools. So we want to congratulate that also. In that same vein, three years ago, four years ago, we came to this board on extreme and outstanding talent that was born and raised in Violin that are teaching in other districts, that have been hired in other districts. So I want to commend each and every one of you, and I'm looking at each and every one of you, on bringing Dawn Bell home where she could be. She is an asset. She will be a community builder. She will be a student builder. She will stand on the side of our youth in our community. Deep, deep roots in the City of Violin family, beautiful, comes from a beautiful family. So we just want to commend and thank you guys for listening to us three years ago when we brought this to this board on making a right hire, a hire. All right? Also, I want to bring to your attention about the pool at Sabatier. We have community meetings within our groups that live in Violin. We have athletic leagues that we meet with here in Violin, and football, basketball, soccer related. And we understand that there is a pool at Sabatier that has not been in operation for some time. I would like to explain the importance of this pool and also the support of the community to have this pool reopened. The importance of this pool, the third leading cause of death globally are drownings. Okay? Not just Violin, not just Jersey, not just California, but globally. We have a huge population of people that, in our community, in our county, in our municipalities, that do not know how to swim. Sound Mind, Sound Body of New Jersey are nonprofit. We do swimming lessons at the community pool that we got open three years ago, right on Fourth Street in Violin, where we've been able to teach a few kids how to swim. And it's been greatly appreciated by the families. But just imagine with this pool open, what we can do throughout our entire city with teaching youth how to swim. Teaching them this vital, this vital lesson that could save their life. Okay? I understand that, and I'll be wrapping up, I know I've got 10 seconds. I understand that taxpayer money was appointed to build this pool. Okay? Taxpayer money went into this great idea to have a community pool within our Violin School District for the youth and adults of our community. To use more taxpayer money upon taxpayer money that was already spent to do other things to me is counterproductive. I think we need to lean on the taxpayer that initially funded this to build that pool and exercise an important option that we can use to teach our youth how to swim. Now, on top of that, we have a Violin High Swim Team that this could be a feeder program for. The kids that excel at swimming, the kids that show promise at swimming, we can then create this as a feeder program to further push a swim program at our high school that will be second to none in the state of New Jersey. Okay? But again, I just wanted to commend y'all on the hire, commend y'all on all the hard work you guys are doing, and also bring up those concerns and those wants from the community in regards to the community pool at Sabatier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing nobody else?
Adoption of resolution for executive session for the purpose of discussing applicants for board vacancy. I just need to, oh, I'm sorry, we need to bring them in now, right? One of them at a time. Good evening and thank you for coming. I'm going to start off by, please state your name and then your reason or reasons for seeking this position on the Violin Board of Education.
Good evening. My name is Makima Douglas, and this is the answer to the question. I served on the Board of Education in 2023 when Renee Fabry stepped down. It was a pleasure working, working with most of you. Ms. Cottisbody, Mr. Fioki, Mr. Holmes, Mr. Sabrana, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Silva. And I had the pleasure of working with some of you in other instances, and I enjoyed it. And I believe it's a responsibility to fill in the gap. I ran for the Violin Board of Education this last election, and I had the fourth highest votes from the voting citizens of Violin. And ultimately, I believe I possess a unique set of skills, background, and experiences that would be an asset to the board's ability to uphold high academic expectations, to calculate and measure outcomes, and to oversee the needs of the school, district, its administration, faculty, students, and families. I'm a connector, and I know that I can connect our schools to our community and to more resources. Thank you.
Question number two, what do you perceive to be the top two issues affecting the Violin Public School System? And how would you consider developing policies to deal with these two issues?
I believe it's the school environment, but I've broken it down into two issues, being parent communication and teachers. I've broken that down into two more smaller categories of hiring and retention. I believe we need to continue filling positions with teachers that are interested in teaching and qualified. We need to make sure that they are certified and they are incentivized to stay. Parents are concerned about receiving information regarding their kids' progress, travel to and fro to school, academic performance, changes in programs, and staffing. All of that culminates into anxiety. Students are struggling with more mental health issues now than ever before, and anxiety is at the top of the list. And I believe we can minimize those concerns, and it starts with leadership. So an adjustment to the policy, I know that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. There are ways to creatively work together and modify what's already been written into policy, but these are my suggestions. Number one, new notification timelines for particular incidents or changes. And number two, new timeframes for certification with mandatory incentives and supports with new timelines and deadlines for the district for those teachers. Thank you.
Question number three, do you currently have any conflicts with the Violin Public School District?
It's so simple. No, I do not.
Question four, what is your experience with the Violin Public School District? Did you attend or have children that attend now or in the past?
I am a product of Violin Public Schools K through 12. My three sons attended Violin Public Schools, and I taught here at All Kids First for 16 years, and five years in one of the toughest districts in New Jersey. I became a teacher and licensed New Jersey supervisor and certified principal because of my Violin Public Schools experience. It's so much a part of me that I continue to invest by collaborating with Violin Public School teachers in literacy, with reading and sharing love for books and art. I continue to support programs that Violin Public Schools students attend, such as summer sports, summer reading. And currently, I've joined Inspire Medical Network, where I work closely with a lot of Violin Public Schools students, parents, and their families, and I provide instruction as a child development specialist, offering early intervention instruction for younger siblings with special needs and/or disabilities. Thank you.
Question number five, as a board member, do you see yourself as a representative of the taxpayers, the school district, or both? And please elaborate.
As a board member, I would see myself as a representative of both taxpayers and the school district. As a board member, it would be my duty to respect, to reflect and respect the beliefs, concerns, questions, and results as if they were sitting at the table. They are the vested stakeholders. I bring them and their voices into the room at any discussion of policy, any issue addressed or decisions made that would be made based on their best interests. Thank you.
We have a sixth and final question that you were not given back there. Describe what you believe the responsibilities of a board member are and what you believe the responsibilities of the superintendent are.
As a school board member, it is my responsibility to make sure that the policies are carried out, policies and procedures. It is also my responsibility to make sure that I represent the taxpayers, the students, and the families that are not there. I am responsible for sharing their thoughts, their interests, their concerns, and doing my best to make sure we make decisions that will handle the issues that arrive in the district. It's not my job to meddle in our superintendent's everyday practices, but to make sure that the superintendent is upholding the law, is upholding the policies, and providing and making sure that all the needs are met for all the bodies that are participating in the school district. And as a superintendent, I would expect the superintendent to have the skills and abilities to handle this very large district, to have the social skills, the critical thinking skills, and creativity to deal with the needs of the staff, their mental, their emotional, their family, to be able to empathize and remember being a teacher at first, being able to supervise, being able to handle his or her conduct, and remove him or herself when necessary. If they have difficulty making decisions, they can pull on the board, pull on their administration, and empower their teachers to provide the needs of the students they will serve.
Thank you. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Please state your name, and question number one is what is or are your reason or reasons for seeking this position on the Violin Board of Education?
Thank you. My name is Edwin Ali Sia, and I want to do everything within my authority to engage, ensure fair and equal access to everyone seeking an education. And the reason I stumbled here, I must have been a doctor at one time because my handwriting is terrible. And to also review and evaluate policies and ensure they are designed with the best interest of the students to have access to resources, they need to succeed regardless of their background. Implement vocational programs in the trades to give opportunity to students not interested in going to college or following with formal education such as universities. Other bullet points that I added was to improve educational outcomes, achieve better performance, help raise student achievement, support teachers and staff, also to prepare students for the out, for the future and the new challenges coming ahead, the technological challenges that we're all surrounded by. Those are some of the reasons I am seeking a position within the board, as well as the fact that I am invested in the community. I lived here for over 40, now, excuse me, 35 years, and my son went to school here. So I have granddaughters, and I am well invested in the community here as well.
Question number two, what do you perceive to be the top two issues affecting the Violin Public School System? And how would you consider developing policies to deal with these two issues?
To lower the high school dropout rate, which is, it's to some extent alarming compared to others. And I understand there's a lot of challenges, social challenges, with students and families in town, in the city. So I definitely understand that, that the social issue sometimes does not allow the students to seek an education and advancement. So I also will look into, seek innovative and motivational programs to make students want to stay in school, encourage parents to take an active role in their children's education, evaluate programs effectiveness in the education, evaluate programs affecting this and adjusting them as needed, evaluate resources availability to improve all of the education opportunities, evaluate school safety and facilities, serve as a role model for others to take a more active role in children's education, support proper compensation for teachers and staff, as well infrastructure improvement.
Question number three: Do you currently have any conflicts with the Vionlin Public School District?
No, I don't. If anything, as public safety director of our police department, I have a great school and police partnership. We've tried to foster a good relationship not only between the school administration, but also with the students, as they need to see us as role models instead of somebody who's gonna get them in trouble. I was a former DARE officer and in charge of the program for many years, and although the numbers show that the DARE program was not effective in reducing drugs and violence, it was effective in creating a very good relationship between the police officers and the community. Those are things that cannot be measured in numbers. So, it was a great program, but the numbers were showing that it was not really effective. The same thing with the GREAT program, the Scare Straight program, Megan's Law. It has done absolutely nothing to reduce victims and offenders. So, we need, in my opinion, to work with a closer relationship between the public safety sector and the school system. I also seek to advance technology which can reflect the needs of our industries in the area and the future.
Question number four: What is your experience with the Vionlin Public School District? Did you attend or have children that attend now or in the past?
No, my son attended here. I was stationed here well after, I wouldn't say stationed, I was in the Marine Corps, and I was stationed here by the Marine Corps, but I was well past high school age. My son did attend here, and I have to admit that he's doing very well as a result of the opportunities afforded to him when he was a student here. He learned a trade, and is very well spoken. He participated in several extracurricular activities, which made him into a well-rounded person. The resources available to him at the time kept him interested and motivated in academics and vocational opportunities as well. He followed a vocational route, and he's doing very well for himself.
Question number five: As a board member, do you see yourself as a representative of the taxpayers, the school district, or both? And please elaborate.
As a voice of the community, to bridge a gap between the school and the public, representing the values, concerns, and aspirations of the community, and to serve, again, as a bridge between the school and the parents, and to bring all of my education and experiences for the challenges ahead, and to bring parents to be more engaged with the school district, which I believe is a really good foundation for any education. I want to remain invested in the community and for new ways to, seeking new ways to improve what we already have achieved, because there's nothing that's ever perfect. There's always room for improvement. And I believe we should not rest on our laurels and continue to challenge ourselves for more innovative ways.
One final question that you were not given back there. Question number six: Describe what you believe the responsibilities of a board member are and what you believe the responsibilities of a superintendent are.
As a board member, ensure transparency, make sure that the policies are up to date, that they are effective, and if they're not effective, to make adjustments that's needed. And the superintendent also, as well, to implement the policies that are being brought forward by the Board of Education, and also to meet the needs of the public and the community at large.
Thank you. You can have a seat.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Good evening. Please state your name, and question number one: What is or are your reason or reasons for seeking this position on the Vionlin Board of Education?
Louise Vasquez, Vionlin. As a lifelong resident of Vionlin, excuse me, as a lifelong resident of Vionlin and a product of the Vionlin Public School System, I am personally invested in the mission to improve student outcomes while looking out for the best interest of local taxpayers in our community. I want to see our district succeed at every level. It is personal to me that our district succeed. As a professional, I understand the value of an education and how a good education can open doors to opportunities that would otherwise not be available. As a child who grew up in the public school system, I understand the struggle that many families face and how that can negatively impact student outcomes. It is my heartfelt desire to see every student in Avonlea School District, administration and staff succeed in every area.
Question number two: What do you perceive to be the top two issues affecting the Vionlin Public School System, and how would you consider developing policies to deal with these two issues?
It is my, it's not just perceived, it's actually data that I was able to obtain. The two critical areas that I see needing improvement are chronic absenteeism at 30.3% and the graduation readiness rates at 86.3% below the state rate of 91.3, between 91 and 94.9. The math and English readiness, ready rates, 65% of students are not ready. The state average is 42%. The English is 35.2% that are not ready. The state average is 19.3% not ready. Although in 2023, 2024, and 2025, we do see a steady increase in these rates. There is still work to do, at minimum, to bring them up to state levels, and I do believe that as a district, we can go even beyond that.
Question number three: Do you currently have any conflicts with the Vionlin Public School District?
I currently have no conflicts within the Vionlin Public School District. None of my immediate family members are employed by the district, nor do I have any business dealings with the district.
Number four: What is your experience with the Vionlin Public School District? Did you attend or have children that attend now or in the past?
As a parent of four children who all graduated out of the Vionlin Public School System and a graduate of Vionlin High School myself, I have been attending the Board of Education meetings since they were young, not frequent at the district level here, definitely the school, and occasionally if it was sports-related or there was a major issue. But in the late 2018, I started to attend monthly because of what occurred with the curriculum at the state level. In January, I would introduce myself to the new incoming board and would state what my expectations are as a parent and a community member, and I have done that since then. This step to become a board member is a natural progression in my involvement. I am known, I have a reputation to be an advocate for parents and community members and our children. It is something that I am passionate about, and it is something that I have been doing now for many years.
Question number five: As a board member, do you see yourself as a representative of the taxpayers, the school district, or both? Please elaborate.
As a board member, I believe we have a dual role to represent the community and the taxpayers. I will use community and taxpayers interchangeably in my answers. To me, they mean the same thing. But dual role, I also represent the district, and simultaneously, the needs of the students and the district, I represent them to the community and the citizens and parents of the community. So, I do believe it is a dual role that a sitting board member represents.
One final question that you were not given back. Question number six: Describe what you believe the responsibilities of a board member are and what you believe the responsibilities of the superintendent are.
It is my belief that it is a superintendent's responsibility to manage the district and to ensure the implementation of the policies and procedures that are developed from this board. It is the board's job to hire based on the recommendations of the superintendent. It is also the board's responsibility to receive input from the head of our district, which is a superintendent, not to be involved in day-to-day matters of the district, to be concerned about students. If we receive complaints, they are to be brought to the board as a whole and then handled appropriately through the representative, which is our superintendent. The chief educational officer, is what he is referred to on the policy and procedures that I have read in preparation for this, is responsible. He is our expert educational advisor, and for that, the board will rely on him for all things pertaining to the district, business matters, educational matters, and managing of staff. And it is our board's job to make sure that the entire district is ran well.
Thank you. You may have a seat.
Thank you.
Now, the adoption of a resolution for executive session for the purpose of discussing applicants for board vacancy. We're gonna retire into executive session. We're going to retire into executive session.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you to all our applicants and for members of the public who are here today. Retreating from closed session, the board has presently been able to come to a consensus as to one of the three candidates to vote upon for the current vacant seat with a term expiring in December. So as such, the board will be going back out for applications. You're more than welcome to apply. Once again, the deadline to apply, the posting will be up within the next two days. An advertisement in the newspaper and online through our social media and such. The deadline for this next round of applications will be Friday, September 26th, with a special meeting to be scheduled at the October 1st board meeting directly right after. So at this time, again, unfortunately, the board has been unable to come to a consensus based on the current applicant pool. But again, you're more than welcome to apply for this next round. Thank you again for your time and for taking the time to answer the board's questions.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?